Thank you to all veterans out there, all speaking. And start with the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. We will now turn things over to the superintendent for the celebration of excellence.
Good evening. Thank you very much. I would also like to begin my remarks this evening with a thank you to all of our veterans of all branches of our military. I want to thank them for their sacrifice, their bravery, and the example that they set for all of us. Mr. Giard or Ms. Safran and Mr. Ms. Johnson will be sharing under their reports how our students learned about veterans today and how they offered thanks to all of our servicemen and women, both past and present. So I look forward to that later on, and I hope you all do too. Now, it is my great pleasure to introduce this year's Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Award winner, Olivia Bachchan. The Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Program, HOBE, was founded in 1958. HOBE's mission is to inspire and develop our global community of youth and volunteers to a life dedicated to leadership, service, and innovation. HOBE programs are conducted annually throughout the United States, serving local and international high schools. HOBE leadership seminars are for sophomore students who want to develop their leadership talents and become stronger leaders in their communities. HOBE's dynamic three- to four-day leadership training explores leadership from three perspectives: personal, group, and societal. The leadership training will feature engaging and interactive speakers, workshops, fun activities, and discussions. Teachers nominate a grade 10 student who exhibits the following traits and skills: outstanding communication, critical thinking, creative problem-solving, strong decision-making, sensitivity to others, charismatic personality, courage to speak out, and challenge and interest in community service. Olivia received numerous teacher nominations. Olivia has been actively involved in our school community. She currently serves as the class president for Student Council, plays on the tennis team, and is part of French Club. She has a desire to help other people, and she and shared she is always looking for opportunities to volunteer her time. She also continues to carry a rigorous course load and excels in all of her classes. Olivia's teachers say that she is an outstanding student who has a desire to pursue excellence in all that she does. In and out of the classroom, Olivia can be found helping her classmates. She is seen as an incredibly considerate student and is always aware of the needs of others. She has a real passion for global affairs and social injustice. Olivia is a natural-born leader. We are very proud that Olivia will be representing Bolton High School at the HOBE Leadership Conference this coming spring. Olivia, congratulations to you and your family. Well done. Would you like to say anything? Congratulations.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to represent Bolton at the Youth Leadership Conference, and thank you for the honor.
Well deserved, young lady. I can't wait to hear all about it. Thank you. Next, we have the Daughters of the American Revolution Good Citizenship Award. This year's award goes to Kylie Kerr. The Daughters of the American Revolution was established in 1890 by a group of pioneering women and our nation's capital who wanted to perpetuate the memory of the men and women who fought to make our country free and independent. DAR members are passionate about educating the youth of America and contributing to schools and student programs in a variety of ways. And in support of that, the DAR Good Citizenship Award and Scholarship Contest was created in 1934 to provide scholarships and awards to outstanding students throughout the country. Each year, teachers from high schools across the country select students from the senior class who demonstrate dependability, service, leadership, and patriotism in their homes, schools, and communities. Kylie was not only unanimously nominated for this award by Bolton High School teachers, but was also nominated in grade 10 for the Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Award, the HOBE Award, which we just gave out, where she represented Bolton on a multi-day leadership seminar. Kylie is a role model at Bolton High School. She is a leader, confident, enthusiastic, and dependable. This young woman has proven to be an integral member of the Bolton High School community. She has become a fixture on honor and high honor roll at Bolton High School and was admitted into the National Honor Society at her initial eligibility. She is a dynamic member of multiple clubs and extracurricular activities. Quite frankly, I'm not sure when she sleeps. She's class representative for Student Council. She serves as vice president. She's been vice president of the BHS Future Business Leaders of America chapter since her freshman year. She's also served others through various tutoring events, as well as supporting multiple American Red Cross blood drives. In her spare time, she works most days after school at Dean Cavantry, where she works on the production floor and in the main office. She's an avid tennis player, practicing year-round, as well as playing at the varsity level for Bolton High School. Kylie exudes positive energy and exhibits it in everything she does. Kylie, congratulations to you on this well-deserved honor, and congratulations to your family. And I want to thank you for everything that you do. Would you? Actually, Kylie, before I let you say something, if it's okay, Mr. Muselli has something that he'd like to say.
Yeah, real quick. So I just want to make sure it's not lost any of the board members of the public watching. That's when Superintendent Heck introduced these two awards. Both of these awards are actually voted on by faculty, and I think that's something pretty special. And there's very few awards that we give out during the year that that happens. So Kylie was nominated for this citizenship award, and then she was kind of got a surprise and was called down to the office and was given an opportunity to write an essay without a lot of preparation to proceed on in the DAR citizenship program and apply for a scholarship. So I have asked Kylie to read her essay to all of us tonight.
Good evening. Yeah, so I got asked to write this essay. I had two hours. I sat in guidance, and I had 500 words to work with. And so my title is "Our American Heritage and Our Responsibility to Preserve It." America was founded on the ideas of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. I love to say that those beliefs hold strong with everyone throughout America today, but that isn't the case. Today, the news is filled with people disrespecting our flag or trying to taint our history for better or worse. I'm not saying that one side is right over the other, because there doesn't seem to be a correct answer. What we need to remember is how our ancestors fought to get us the freedoms we have today, the ones we all take for granted. We need to remember the ideas our country was founded on and preserve our history in order to continue supporting our nation. This starts with we, the people. We, the people, need to stand up for what we believe in, fight for our freedoms, and ensure the next generation knows how hard it was for our forefathers to ensure we could be where we are today. This starts with the good citizens in the world and branches out from there. When I think of a good citizen, I think of everyone from the kids who hold the door for strangers to the men and women who risk their lives fighting for our country. I think about the people who are dependable, who show up to work on time and remember the little details, like your dog's name or your birthday. Good citizens are the leaders who take charge in moments of crisis, or the teachers who share the knowledge with children every day. I think of the people who take time out of their busy schedules to help the elderly or volunteer at soup kitchens. Most importantly, a good citizen is a patriot, someone who understands what it took to get our country where it is today, someone who stands proudly for our flag, a person who is willing to have a conversation with someone who doesn't agree with them. It is these types of people who help support our community and our country and continue to do so every day. All of these qualities help support our nation. With the way the world is right now, sometimes it's hard to see what an impact people can have. Not only do they put in the work to better their communities, but they also stand up for what they believe in. With all the chaos in the world, it is important to remember what our country was founded on, to understand the losses that people went through so we can live our lives. It is these good citizens that need to stand up and teach the next generation what our country is all about. Yes, like every country, our history is full of ups and downs and unprad moments. That doesn't mean that everything we have worked so hard to achieve should be thrown away. There are plenty of good people in our country, many who risk their lives every day for our freedoms, others who fight their way up through poverty into success. These qualities, along with preserving our history, are the reason our country has a chance at surviving the challenges we are facing today.
Outstanding, Kylie. Outstanding. Let's give her a round of applause if we could. Thanks for sharing that tonight, Kylie. Mr. Muselli brought that to me and thought rightfully so that everybody should hear that essay tonight, and it's just awesome. Would you like to say anything?
I thank you so much for this opportunity. I was a little nervous about writing the essay and reading it, as Muselli knows, because like, none of us had any idea what it was going to be about. It was actually a pretty cool topic, so I really appreciated that. And so thank you, Mr. Muselli, for putting me through that and dealing with me in physics.
Great job, Kylie. Thank you. And the last part of our celebration of excellence is to honor a departing board member, Ann Decker. Ann, I want to express my sincere gratitude for your service. Being a school board member entails much more than most people know, that is for sure. You took on your board duties with dedication, grace, and seriousness. I am grateful for your active leadership as a judicious steward of our organization. I know you always carefully deliberated on matters before the board, even when the decisions were difficult. As a leader, you grounded your decision-making on what is right best for kids while also supporting our staff. Thank you for your leadership, your commitment to our students and our community, and your support of our mission to inspire all students to grow as learners, individuals, and citizens. You truly will be greatly missed. I do have a gift for you that I'd like to drop off tomorrow if it stops raining, and if not, I'd like to stop by on Monday, if that would be okay, as just a token of our appreciation for all that you have done for the district. And it's been a pleasure to work with you. Thank you.
Thanks, Kristin.
I'd just like a second also, what Kristin said. Ann, you've been an exemplary board member, and I know your thoughtful questions and insights have been useful to me personally and to the board as a whole. And I'm especially thankful for your help on the finance committee. It's going to be hard to replace. Thank you. Thank you for all your dedication and, as Kristin said, what's right for kids. So, thank you again.
And that concludes our celebration of excellence tonight.
Moving on to comments from the audience. Do we have any of those this evening? Doesn't look like a very big crowd, so. Hearing nothing. Do we have any additions to the agenda?
We do not.
And now we're on to routine business approval of minutes. I'm looking for a motion, please, to approve the October 14th, 2021 business meeting minutes. So moved. This is Chris. Thank you, Chris.
Rhea will second.
Thank you, Rhea. Do we have any editing or commentary on these minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining. Those pass. Moving on to Board of Education Committee reports. First will be Kappa. And do we have?
Joe, could we put that up, or do you want me to do it?
So the Kappa Committee met last week, maybe, and discussed the lists that we are currently working on and projecting for the future years. The top category for fiscal year '22 are items that have already been budgeted from leftover funds from previous projects. So it's just a matter of when those projects are actually activated. They don't count against any future cap expenses. If there's some question about the hierarchy of these, whether they have to go in a particular order or not. But again, they are funded from previous expenditures. I think of those, the one that we want to get done as soon as possible is to fire a stage, fire curtain for the stage. So for this year's, excuse me, this year's request, this is a list that we've been working, we've had for a number of years. I don't believe there's anything new on this list that we had last year. We are working to get numbers plugged into some of these. Obviously, the biggest one is the BCS roof replacement. This has been delayed a couple of times. COVID slowed everything down. We've thrown a wag number at it just to get us into the right ballpark of where we think the cost is going to be for the roof replacement somewhere in the $1.8 million range. It's a horrible time right now to be bidding roof projects or any construction projects. So hopefully, the industry will calm down by the time we're ready. We just received the HVAC report from our engineers, so we're studying that. The report was, the engineers were challenged to give us a description of work, scope of work, and estimate for replacing the heating and ventilating system that's currently in place, placing kind with updated equipment. They were then further challenged to combine that with different scenarios for adding air conditioning to the school. The report is pretty good. Like I said, we just received it. I'm still kind of digesting it. The Buildings and Ground Committee will be meeting to talk about it in further detail. In general, the, it looks like the costs associated with just the repair and replacement of the existing equipment, not adding air conditioning is somewhere in the $1.5 million range. That is trade cost for that work. It doesn't include some of the recommended other work that may need to be done from their walkthroughs. There may be, there's some concerns about some fire rating issues and various other things that may add to the cost. Adding air conditioning at a minimum doubles that number. They did give a number of scenarios, basically from a very bare minimum air conditioning number two, pretty much a as Cadillac of system as we could possibly hope to put in the school. That goes up to $9.7 million, so I think we're done talking about that. It actually, some of these options do recommend going, replacing the boilers to all electric for energy efficiency, sustainability, and all that. It's my opinion that that's not a good, a good way, thing to pursue. We just brought gas to the school. We have fairly new boilers, and that doesn't seem to be the right way to spend money. But more, more will come on that. We do not yet, are not ready to put numbers necessarily of these, but hopefully over the next couple of months, the items two, three, and four can be reworked a little bit with some recent numbers and goals. And the rest of the items, we've already talked about in the past, I believe. So that 2022 list is, has been sent, I believe, to the Board of Select. Is that right, Superintendent?
Well, we discussed it with them last year, and we got a vote on this tonight.
We'll be sending it based on our approval. So this is essentially the list that we had last year. We are trying to refine the numbers.
And then the 23 list, which is our ask in the Kappa budget for next year as well. FY23 list, which includes the fire alarm system upgrade, which we are still waiting on an estimate for, the door lock replacement, the rest of those monies, the storage building at Bolton High School for vans and equipment, a three-bay garage with foundation, and window blinds replacement at both BCS and BHS.
I failed to mention that the 2022 was for a potential bond that was going to be issued for this work. Not, that's not part of the capital expenditure from the budget.
Correct. So we'll be entertaining a motion possibly to move this capital plan forward. We don't yet know when the first selectman will be calling the Kappa meeting, but sometimes it's just we're going to meet in a couple of weeks. So ideally, the Board of Ed has their part done to bring forward for discussion if you approve this this evening.
I'll make the motion to approve this list.
Sue, a second.
Thank you, Scott. And Sue, does anyone want to ask any questions about our five-year capital plan or specifically this year's list?
I can't find my chat way, you know, my chat, whatever. But anyway. Okay, I do have a couple of questions. The, so the storage unit for the vans, do we have a lot more, a lot more equipment and vehicles than we have in the past?
No, we have the same number of vehicles. We have two vans. Previously, we were able to keep one van in bad weather inside the garage bay of the tech ed area. We're not allowed to do that, so that is, that was like a sort of close that down. And so now they always have to be outside, which is not necessarily good for them. We currently store soccer goals in the woods, and by that I mean like leaning into the trees in the woods on the side of the soccer field, because we have no storage availability for it. And as our track and field program with no track and field continues to grow, we continue to have track and field paraphernalia that we also need to store. So, you know, we can't keep putting things in the woods because they just deteriorate quick, quickly.
Okay, let me see. That was my question, and I had see, so that was one. And what is, what is the clock? So this clock system is only good for 20 years? That's, it's on a 20-year cycle?
Mr. Muselli, can you explain about the clocks?
Yeah, and it's actually the, you know, the bell system, the system that tones the bells and kind of keeps us organized. It was replaced when the building was constructed 12 years ago, but we've already had one failure that actually caused a disruption to the, to the school day. I've got that patched, but we're kind of looking forward, making sure that we have a replacement in place before that fails completely. So we're not in an emergency anymore, but it's something that we're thoughtfully looking towards replacing.
Okay, and just one other question about the soccer field. It's $2 million estimate. So is that in addition to fixing the field, or is that?
That is fixing the fields and installing a track.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Thank you.
It's soccer and track at the same time without, without lighting.
Okay, thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Great questions. Thank you.
Sam, I don't know. How many questions on Kappa? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone who was opposed or abstaining? I think I heard everybody. Okay, that passes to Finance Committee.
Okay, Finance met yesterday, and at this point, we are 21% expended with our budget as opposed to 22% last year. And I think the superintendent is going to take us through it.
Thank you. Mr. Muselli, if you could go on to page, the next page of that one, please. Thank you. And one more, please. So tonight, we are looking for a proactive transfer. It's a request operations transfer of $12,020 from electricity to equipment to cover a shortfall in capital reserve for the Bolton High School HVAC controllers and Commons visual lighting project. Pricing significantly increased since verbal quotes were obtained during last year's budget process. So I'll be looking for a motion for that this evening. So I don't know if you want to do that first and or you want to, why don't we review the transfers next? We'll do that one whole package, I guess. So we had to purchase some Slim Carry cases for Chromebooks. It was a reclassification. We needed additional monies to cover the cost of Code Monkey. We had a reclassification to cover additional costs of PSATs. We had a reclassification to purchase a battery that failed in the main office at BCS. A reclassification to purchase Internet Safety Concepts presentation, which occurred last evening for parents and today for our students. Thank you, Ann, for being there last night. I appreciate it. And we had an issue with some ballast of library lights, so we needed a reclass there to fix those. And we had to cover the cost of prior year postage rental invoice that was received this year. So we had to clear that out, and then an increased cost to renew and replace the postage meter and rental and service maintenance at Bolton High School. So those are the transfers. Any questions? So I guess maybe what we should do is approve those transfers first, and then for you to make a separate motion for the $12,020 from electricity to equipment to cover the shortfall in capital reserves for the HVAC and the visual lighting project.
So I'm looking for a motion, please, to approve the, these are the October transfers, right?
Correct.
The October 2021 transfers that we just covered.
Moved.
Thank you, Scott.
Second.
Thank you. It was real, right?
Ann.
Is there any questions or comments about the October transfers? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Can you give me the amount again, $12,000?
$12,020 from electricity to equipment.
So we're looking for a motion, please, to transfer $12,020 from electricity to equipment to cover the shortfall in already budgeted HVAC controllers.
And the Commons visual lighting project.
And the Commons visual lighting project, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Scott.
Seconded, Sue.
You, Scott, and Sue, is there anyone who has any questions or comments about the controllers or lighting?
Removing this from, just the fine item for electrical purchase from the building.
For electricity, yeah, in John's budget.
So the $12,000, we think we're being efficient.
Well, yeah, because we have a locked-in, Cassel, where are you? Well, yeah, because we have a locked in castle. Where are you?
Right here. What's our lock? My rate is currently locked in.
Thank you. So that's a, that's a given for us. There's going to be no change regardless of what's going on currently. Which is why we believe at this point, based on our current numbers and projections, that we will have savings enough to cover this.
Thank you, Scott. I asked that same thing. Is there anyone else who has any questions? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Sorry, anyone who's opposed? We're abstaining. That transfer passes. Thank you very much. Onto Personnel Committee. The Personnel Committee had a meeting today to discuss our strategies going into. This year's negotiations, which are two groups. One of them is a paraprofessionals and the other is the administrative assistants. And we are going to be sending that language forward to them and. Hopefully coming into an off the record agreement. That concludes our committee reports. Now onto the student representative's report.
Mike, you're on.
Can you hear me? Okay, unfortunately Emily couldn't be here tonight, so I will be reading her notes as well. The National Air Society had their induction ceremony on Sunday and it was historic. The seniors had not been inducted yet, which should have been inducted last year, but COVID prevented that. So it was pretty unique to be able to get part of that. And then the senior capstone paper was due last Friday and they are starting to turn their attention to what topics they are choosing for their projects. Fall, fall sports are coming to an end and cross country finished with an amazing season. The girls finished second in the state and N triple Cs and Megan Minakuti qualified for the New England Meat Help on Saturday. The boys were fourth in the state and third in the N triple Cs. Both boys and girls soccer made it into the state tournament. Girls ended their regular season with a record of seven wins, eight losses, one tie and lost their first tournament game on Monday. The boys ended their regular season with a record of eight wins, six losses and two ties and won their first tournament game on Tuesday and they have another one tonight. Winter sports signups are over and practice.
Can I just, can I just say they won tonight? So we're on to Saturday.
They did win. Okay, that's good news. Uh, and then practices for winter sports will start December second. And then last Friday, there was also a pep rally that was held with all grades outside the school with several different activities. Teacher versus student dodgeball, my personal favorite. I actually got to participate in that, so that was pretty fun. That night, there's also a bonfire at school held from six to nine and over sixty people showed up to the event and there was pizza, hot chocolate smores and a soccer tournament. It went very well and everyone who went seemed to have a good time. Then the girls volleyball has been doing very well with a score of fifteen wins to eight losses. And then jazz band is actually returning after over a year and their first meeting will be happening next week.
Thank you. Feel free to stay, Mike, but you don't have to if you got work to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to community meeting reports. Do we have any community meetings to report on?
I can report that the Bolton Scholarship Fund has started its fall meetings and. We're working on revising or making any necessary changes to the application. Which will be released in March with deadlines in early May. More information about that will be forthcoming to our high school and college students. Probably around the beginning of the year. And then I missed being able to make a report last month because my computer died in the middle of the meeting. I would have reported then that at our annual meeting, we elected, reelected. Members to new two-year terms and I was elected to another term as Secretary of the Bold Scholarship Fund. I think that's it. Oh, actually. I should mention that as far as crack goes, I have not been able to attend any crack meetings recently. I think I'm going to have to step down from that role as the board's crack representative, so. Hopefully we can find somebody else who may be able to pick that up.
Thank you, Chris. Is there anyone else who has attended any meetings? Hearing none, I will now turn things over to Superintendent for the Superintendent of Schools report.
All right, thank you very much. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Miss Saffron, who is going to give the Bolton Center School update this evening. Jess.
Thank you. I'm going to start with the SRBI update and then I'm actually going to share with Mr. G R. We're going to tag team this one. Um, so we have, we have, Mr. Maselli, if you could switch slides. Thank you. We have had a great and busy start to the school year and one important component of that is getting SRBI supports in place for students. We currently have forty students in grades one through five receiving reading intervention. This is overseen by two certified staff and supported by four part-time paraprofessionals. We also have twenty-three students in grades one through five receiving math intervention. Math intervention is overseen as part of a certified teacher's role. And we also have one full-time paraprofessional and one part-time professional to support that. Um, we do not at this time have any kindergartners receiving intervention because they are busy getting their great instruction. And having that first opportunity to learn within our building, we are, we work together. And they are receiving, so they're high quality instruction and targeted supports if needed. And soon we look at who might need that intervention, but we give them time first with their classroom teacher. Um, a big part of math intervention right now is we are working on creative ways to support more students. And looking at the different options that we have and some new resources, which we're really excited to bring in to really booster up our fact fluency. All kindergarten teachers through eighth grade. They are able to collaborate with each other to find ways to support their students as well as reach out to supports from the specialists. So in the middle school, those students receive support during the wind block. And they're overseen mainly by the math and LA teacher, but if they need extra support, we use those specialists to reach out and help. And that is where we are right now with SRBI.
Any questions for Jessica?
Jessica, what is win, W I N N, what does that stand for?
Well, that is the term we use. It represents what I need now and actually every grade has a dedicated block during the school day. So it's really, um, our goal is that teachers are working and we have set time for individualized and personalized support. So some students might be working on reading, math, some might be getting support in writing. But it's really looking at giving time for that students for what they need. Some students in the room do enrichment projects and it's just that it's a dedicated time. Also for when students are out of the room for SRBI, we work so they're not missing instruction. So that's during that block, the teacher is doing support in different ways for the students in the room.
So how many students? You, you had numbers for the elementary level, so. How many students participate in this or do all the students?
All students, all the whole school, every student participates in win. It just looks different for students that are in the room versus those that leave the room. Some students at times do their SRBI within the classroom because of what their goals are. That when students are in SRBI, they have goals. And we meet every six weeks to see how they're progressing towards those goals, but the goal that they meet it and they are no longer on part of the intervention program. So it's, but every student has something that they are working on without the, throughout the whole building. Everybody has a goal.
Thank you.
Jessica, just since this will be available on the website and. People who watch who might not know what SRBI is, could you?
Yeah.
Explain?
So SRBI is scientific research-based intervention. So we do, it's a system and, and other places, it's also called response to intervention, RTI. Connecticut does, has a few different letters for it. But what it is, is it's targeting and looking for students who have specific areas with typically within reading, writing and math. Where they are beyond a grade level below in key foundational areas. So you know, a lot of times in reading, it's, you know, those early phonemic skills. Math, it could be early counting skills and it's really in key foundational skills that they'll need to build on within the classroom. And there's goals are set. It's the goals within six to eight weeks. Moving them and helping the students have a better platform to build off on those in the room skills. There's so much about it. It's, there's tiers to it. There's lots about it. We have a whole information about it on our district website. The, the group, the administrative group has done a wonderful job of updating our pamphlet with different information. They have a huge document about it. It's lengthy.
Thank you.
And students who participate in SRBI, are they identified by teachers or by their results on standardized tests? Or how does a student end up in SRBI?
There, we have lots of different ways that we can do it. Primarily it's the classroom teacher, but we also use different diagnostic screeners. We try to make sure that we use multiple data points and not singular, use one data point to decide if a student's in there. So that's, it's really important to us that we look at different data.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ria and Chris. Great questions. Thank you, Jessica. Nice job. Mr. G.
Good thanks, Jess. So we had our walkathon take place on Thursday, November fourth. The weather was perfect and the students had a blast. There were many people to thank for making this such a successful event. First, the BCS PTA and the volunteers were a tremendous help in organizing the event and helping the day of. Because obviously we used, we actually switched the course from the field to the parking lot. So the volunteers made their way around the parking lot, so it was a huge help. The BCS staff played a large role in getting the students excited for the two-week lead-up because there's in-class lessons that the company Apex came and did with the students for the two weeks leading up to the walk. And probably most importantly, the students and families were once again very generous with their donations. And today we had the wrap-up meeting and I got the grand total. I asked the PTF, I could say it, sixteen thousand five hundred sixty-six dollars was the walkathon that the school took in. So that's amazing. The PTA took it in and the PTA will use it. And those pledges, there were seven, seven hundred and sixty-nine pledges and again sixteen thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars goes to the PTA, which then they'll use. To support enrichment opportunities at the school, so. I was, um, because the day before, Mrs. Saffron and I were talking, I think we were like nine thousand, so the big push from Thursday and they leave it open over the weekend until today. We gained a lot more money. Amazing.
That's awesome.
Veterans Day, so normally on November eleventh each year, we have a large school-wide assembly to celebrate Bolton's veterans. We invite all the veterans in from the community. It's one of our favorite events each year. Since we're not having assemblies right now, we had to adjust our plans. And to celebrate our veterans, we had the students make handmade cards, which we mailed out. And I know the superintendent and many other members of the school community saw on Facebook and other places that the veterans are very touched. And really appreciated the cards from the students. Then we also put together a video with different performances that often, that usually happen in the assembly. We put them into the video that I'm about to show you along with some pictures of Bolton's veterans. We sent this video out to BCS families today and I want you to watch it. Enjoy the video.
That was great. I've watched it four times today. Thank you, Mr. Giard. All right, I believe now I'm turning it over to Ms. Johnson for Bolton High School, correct?
Yes, you are. Good evening, everyone. At the high school, our student council has been very busy. They've coordinated a canned food drive and are donating $200, thanks to a Wear Pink for Breast Cancer Day. Spirit Week was a huge success, and our students particularly enjoyed their pep rally as well as their bonfire. So for Veterans Day at the high school, students in grade nine through 12 learned about veterans from different conflicts throughout history. Ninth-grade students reflected and responded to veterans' accounts from Iraq and Afghanistan. Tenth-grade students reflected on interviews from veterans who served in the First World War. Eleventh-grade students learned about the experiences of the Vietnam veterans and their struggles with PTSD. And our 12th-grade students analyzed legislation pertaining to veterans who served in the Second World War. All students had the opportunity to discuss the importance of Veteran Day, Veterans Day while in class today. Like Mrs. Safran mentioned, we too have an SRBI, we, we actually refer to it as RTI. This year, through some creative scheduling, RTI classes were developed based on students needing academic support this year, reteaching and reassessing based on mastery from last year, and credit recovery due to failures. To English, to math, to social studies, and to science teacher, for a total of 14 sections of RTI support are available for our students. We currently have 32 students who have been scheduled for RTI this semester, 17 of those are enrolled in eight different courses, but working with an actual teacher on a new credit recovery program called Apex. The Apex program is free at this current time, and multiple RTI teachers have participated in professional development hosted by Apex. It's just really nice to have another credit recovery program, especially one that is no cost to the students or the district. That concludes our report at Bolton High School, if you have any questions?
Thank you, Christine. Chris?
Thank you. When do students take these courses? Are they in addition to their regular courses?
They're scheduled right throughout the day, one of the eight periods. They, they are in addition, yes. Or some just support, some students actually request to have one of the courses just for some support.
Does it, so the students, these are, are these credited courses, or?
Most are, yes, most are, most of them are credit recovery. We do have, some of the students do, do not receive credit if they request to have just some extra help by the teacher, they can have that within their, their day, they can go down to that teacher's classroom every day and just receive some extra support.
And those students counted in the 32, or?
They are, yes, but there's maybe three to four that have, that are not receiving credit, so it's a very, very low number.
Okay, and so if a student is taking an English class and let's say, social studies, for the, our, the RTI class, they're getting credit?
Yes, most of that, well, most of it's due to credit, to failures last year, and it's a credit recovery. So we want to keep them current with their peers, so we will schedule them, in addition to their current social studies course, they, they would have another, an RTI section for last year, so we can get them current with their peers and get them all the credits that they need in order to graduate on time.
Sarah?
And if I may add, Apex, Apex program is free to the district because of the state of Connecticut's use of their COVID relief funds. It is a well-vetted program, it is a gold class program that we would not, a gold standard program that we would not typically afford, so that the students are getting a high-quality, access to high-quality curricular materials. The other nice thing about this program is that while we can use it for credit recovery, those students who might need to fill the gaps, as Ms. Johnson was speaking about, the curriculum can be chosen, you can choose pieces of, so that we can fill some gaps for students that may have been missed. It's an amazing resource that is available to all public schools, there has been professional development across the state that the administrators, myself, teachers have taken part of, so great thank you to Mrs. Johnson, she really picked it, picked up the ball to make sure that this happened for our students. It's an awesome opportunity that we can support our students at this time with us.
So this is a credit recovery program, why would you go with a program like Apex as opposed to the curriculum that we already have?
Well, there are two ways of doing that, we can either do a credit recovery, or the student can retake the actual class. We found that with the credit recovery program, students are able to take, you know, be successful and maybe master the skill within a semester versus a full year. We have also found that a lot of these students that are in the current RTI class, you know, they, they didn't just, didn't quite master last year, so their average might have been maybe a 58, a 59, and it didn't really, if we could just get them those, you know, reteach those skills and push them forward a little bit, it might have been the better solution than putting them in a full-year course. So we're just, we're very mindful, and we're trying to come up with some creative ways to, to keep our kids current, especially with, you know, the pandemic and the last year and a half, it was very difficult for some of our students.
This program's also, thanks, Ann, I think that's a great question, there's, this program's also more robust than some typical credit recovery programs, so there can be whole, complete units developed, that's actually more aligned to the curriculum we have in place, so it's a better resource than some that have been available.
And how does it appear on a transcript?
Well, right now, it would be an RTI, it would say RTI English, RTI Social Studies. Some of the students have received I's from last year, so it may not even have to appear on, on the transcript, it's just all, all case-by-case basis, but it would, right now, it's, it's an RTI, whatever, it's in English, math, social studies, or science, that's how it's appearing.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess I would just like to add under the whole RTI umbrella, a really a huge thanks to Ms. Johnson, so, you know, with a, with a school of 270 kids, it's really hard to meet the individual needs of everybody, but she comes really close between some really creative master scheduling to free up some of our teachers to guide students through RTI, to evaluating, you know, to your question, Ms. Decker, you know, what are their actual needs, is it a full course, or is it a little bit of makeup? And then maximizing the different resources we have, like the Apex program, she's really done a great job meeting individual needs, I, I think our RTI program is in the best shape it's, it's ever been at, at Bolton High School, so thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would like to echo that, but I'd also like to address something that Mr. Muselli said, where, you know, high school of 270 kids, it's difficult to individualize, and that sounds odd, because it's a small number. However, when you are scheduling and you have very limited resources, which is what we have at Bolton High School, and you have four grade levels of students who want to take a plethora of different courses and select different things, you know, once we get beyond freshman year, where you're pretty pegged into what you have to take, it becomes more and more challenging to find available certified staff in the appropriate curriculum areas to meet the needs of students, to address areas where they need some shoring up, if you will, so I just wanted to address that piece, why, I know why he said it like that, and I'm thinking, you're all thinking, what the heck is he talking about? So I just wanted to address that. Thank you, Ms. Johnson, very much.
Thank you.
All right, we are on to grants. So the first part, this information is not new, it is the list of our grants, the, the type, whether it's a source of federal or state monies, or a combination thereof, the objectives of the grants, the qualifiers, the grant period, and then comments with regards to information about the grants. Any questions on this part, for anybody? Rhea?
I just have one question, and for the, the amount for the 22 and the 21?
Oh, wait, wait, can you hang on one second? Do you have any questions just on, can you go back, Mr. Muselli? Any questions on this first part, just about the information about the grants? No? Okay, all right, if, if we could go on, Mr. Muselli, to, to the grants for 21, 22. That information there is shared with you with the amounts that we are receiving for each. Couple of the things that I'd just like to call to everybody's attention, and then I'd be happy to take questions about this part, Rhea, okay? Would be a rather significant decrease in our choice monies. Last year, we had 48 choice students, which is what we budgeted for, for this year, this year, we ended up with 40 choice students. So we have a decrease between the actual choice tuition plus a bonus that we get, depending upon if we have kindergartners and the number of kindergartners that we have, of $82,610. So in that portion of the budget, we had allocated monies to go towards technology purchases that we would not put in the budget, but that we still need to purchase. Because we don't have those monies, we took those technology pieces out of the choice budget, and fortunately, because we have coronavirus relief monies, which I'm going to talk about in a minute, we put technology purchases into the one-time coronavirus relief monies. So, Rhea, now for your question, if it pertains to this part?
Right, and you answered part of it with explaining about the open, the open choice monies, but there were other, for example, Title II, the $12,000 was lower, so is that because of the enrollments, does that, is that part of the formula, because you might have less students?
Yeah, the title, the title monies are all base, they're, they're all formulaic by the feds, I got to be honest with you, I don't know if I could actually tell you what the actual formula actually is, to be honest with you, and it sometimes changes as well, so, but those are all formulaic by the federal government.
Okay, so basically, if, if, I guess we'd say that, well, a good portion of the money that, the difference, which is about like $40,000, the total, for the grand total, from one year to the other, so basically, that was a lot of choice money, and then there were some, there were some areas that went up.
Correct.
And it's just based on the formula, right?
Yeah, correct, and we never know from one year to the next, to be honest, till they put out the award.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a quick question about the choice, the drop, 48 to 40, did we see that just in new students coming in, less than we expected, or did we lose them throughout the grades?
Both, so we have two kindergartners, we budgeted for six, quite frankly, I wasn't even sure we were going to get two, and we've lost some other students, we've had families that have moved out of Hartford, and as a result, they can no longer be part of the choice program, and therefore cannot attend Bolton Public Schools. And also, I just want to call to everyone's attention, I think I've shared this before, we have a number of districts around us who are now also, right, taking choice students from the zone in Hartford that we draw from as well. All right, any other questions on grants? All right, thank you, everybody, great questions, moving on to coronavirus relief monies. So we have a number of coronavirus relief monies. The first, and some of these are historical, but I wanted to give the board a full picture of kind of where we have stood with regards to these relief grants. First, we had ESER-1 funds, and that was released back in March of 2020, and now we were, Bolton received $17,146, and although you can't really purchase 0.26% of a Chromebook, that's how it had to work, 54.26%, you may recall that we had a very generous donation from Simon Eyes that also helped to purchase the rest of the ones that we needed to purchase, so we've already fully expended that amount. Scrolling down a little bit, in terms of the next set of monies, was the coronavirus relief funds for $184,480, that too was released in March of 2020, and was fully expended last year, and you can see the, the plethora of, of items that it went to purchase was all to support safety, health, and wellness, to the extent that we could, PPE, document cameras, wireless microphones, desk shields, touchless dispensers, hand sanitizers, electrostatic sprayer disinfectants, and those type of items, we could go on to the next page, Mr. Muselli, please. You know, safety goggles, an outdoor canopy tent for meal distribution, the air scrubber unit that we have in the nurses' room and the isolation room. So you can see the total there again is 184,408. The next group of funds that we received were ESER-2 funds, and that came out last January, and our grant was approved in April. That budget is $76,019 and has to be expended by the 30th of September in 2023. We expect to be fully expended by next September. We intend to purchase Chromebooks, you know, again, we talked about money in choice that we no longer have, so there you can see a, a good chunk of it right there. We did, as you are aware and saw in a previous presentation, we had summer learning programs that we offered this past summer for learning recovery, we had monies out of this fund to go towards some of the summer learning salaries and supplies for summer learning. Next, we have the ARP ESER funds, which we received $169,510, and although it says the grant period is 3/13/2020, that isn't when it was released, it's when we are allowed to go back and use it for, but because we had already utilized the other funds for the host of PPE and safety-type things that we needed to have to address being able to open up school during the pandemic, we wrote for other needs that we have as well, that have, some of which have been driven by the pandemic, and some of which have come to light as a need, if we could go back, please. As part of it, so again, in there also, now that we don't have it in choice, we have Chromebooks in there, replacement of desktop computers for Bolton Center School teachers, sound field system for Bolton Center School teachers, you know, teaching with a mask is difficult at best, teachers are already having strained voices and issues, a sound field system is going to amplify their voice, particularly, you know, for younger children to hear them, and just, just for better teaching and learning, we're not able at this point right now anyways, we had a company come out and do some assessments at Bolton High School, the classrooms are small, teachers can already hear each other through the walls, so if we were to amplify voices, that would be not a good thing. We have summer learning salaries for this past summer also in this grant, as well as transportation for summer learning. We anticipate to be fully expended by the 1st of December in 2020. We anticipate to be fully expended by the first of December in twenty twenty-three for this grant. I'd also like to call to the board's attention the fact that we are also just been notified that we are receiving additional coronavirus relief monies specific for special education under IDEA. We have not, we submitted one grant today. We are waiting to hear back on that grant. So once I have more information about grant monies in approval, the requirements for the special education funds are extremely prescriptive and can only be used for very certain things with regards to special education. So Beth Casal, Sarah and I had the pleasure of two days worth of three-hour webinars last week to learn more about these funds and how possibly they can be used. So stay tuned. More information will be coming on that. Lastly, I just want to call to the board's attention that these relief monies, our grants met the full requirements of the letter of the law for these monies as well as directly aligned to goals one and two of our strategic plan. Any questions for me on coronavirus relief monies? Yep, Chris?
Thank you, Kristen. Could you clarify about this, the sound field? Or you said, you mentioned, I believe, having to talk to some folks about the issue of overhearing teachers in other classes. Is having this sound technology going to amplify that problem or help with it?
No. So at Center School, we don't have that issue at all. And an amplification is not going to be an issue because those walls are built like solid. Correct. At the high school, where we're not going to be putting in sound field because the walls are paper thin. You know, you've been in my office before and somebody might be meeting in a conference room. That's a perfect example, right? And it's like they're sitting right next to us having a conversation. So that is why it was advised to us to not have sound field at the high school level.
Is there, I mean, I, I would guess that there might be a greater need at the elementary school. But is there a need at the high school that could be met in other ways? Or is it worth exploring, you know, soundproofing or some sort of minimal efforts that could be taken to, to help with that? I mean, how, how big of an issue would it be at high school?
Mr. Muselli?
So, you, you know, we are, the rooms are smaller, right? So the, not, not the new rooms, the science rooms, that, that's a different story. But most of the rooms are the same size that maybe even some of you who attended Bolton High School were, were in, right? So the, the sound issue really comes in with all of the new technology that went into the building with the HVAC and the wiring and the ceiling. So the ceilings are lower and there's the open space. Well, the open space carries the sound. But at the same time, the ceilings are lower, the rooms aren't too big. So the need for teacher amplification isn't really the same as, as we have it, you know, at Bolton Center School. And then to the superintendent's point, you know, the, the gain we might get by amplifying teachers would cause a distraction because of the, the, it's the open plenum design of a modern building with the ceiling. So, you know, we've looked at the pros and cons, and at this point, honestly, there's more, more cons than pros at the high school because of the design of the open plenum.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, hearing none. Moving on. That concludes my report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Unfinished business. I don't think we have any of that. Moving on to new business, the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school calendar. Address.
Yep, absolutely. So, Mr. Muselli, I think is working on putting that up for me. Thank you.
Sorry, Zoom's being finicky. Give me just one more second.
Can we make that bigger possibly? Thank you. So what we have here is a draft for next year's school calendar. It pretty much mimics to a large extent this year's school calendar in terms of when breaks are and I also met with the East Con group and there had been some discussion about when April break would be. It seemed to me that it's more logical for April break to be attached to Good Friday next year because Good Friday is Friday the seventh. So I believe the entire region is going with this approach, although there may be a few rogue schools. But I do believe that Columbia is also going to be going with the same approach. Any questions on the calendar? Okay.
So we're looking for a motion then to adopt the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school calendar.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone have any questions or comments about the school calendar? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 So anyone opposed? Or abstaining? That was everybody. Looks like we have a couple of resignations this evening.
Actually, I don't have any tonight, which I'm very happy to report.
Okay, good.
A bonus right now. I'm gonna take it.
We like stability. Okay, on to policies. We have a number of policies up for a first read.
And actually, I'm going to be looking for approval of these policies tonight. These are statutory changes that are in effect and we need to be in compliance.
The policy committee did discuss these policies and we are, I think, Sue, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're in agreement that we have no concerns about moving them forward for approval tonight. I'm happy to go through and talk about the changes if you wish.
Sure.
Okay. So we have two non-discrimination policies that are more or less the same in the changes that they're making. One is one-two-two-zero and one is four-one-one-eight. The major change is because state law recently redefined the definition of veteran. And those changes went into effect October first of this year. So the policy is being updated to reflect that change. There's also changes in the language clarifying that complaints can be filed regarding discrimination and harassment and which relevant school officials to contact. And then I could see other, there's another clarification that complaints against the superintendent should be filed with the board chair. And then there's some clarification of timelines for investigating complaints. I wouldn't say that any of the changes are major or substantive. Next, we have policy one-four-one-five, possession of deadly weapons and firearms. There was an oversight in the, well, I don't know if it was an oversight, but the previous policy didn't explicitly prohibit deadly weapons and firearms on school transportation. So they were prohibited because transportation is considered a school-sponsored activity. But this just, you know, makes it absolutely clear that the policy applies to kids who are on buses as well. We already dealt with four-one-one-eight. Again, it's basically the same changes as in twelve-twenty-four-one-one-eight dot one. This is being revised. I guess it was a recent notice of interpretation issued by the US Department of Education to clarify that Title IX prohibits discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation and gender identity. Next, we have five-one-three-one dot nine-one-one bullying and safe student climate. This has been revised to conform with a new public law in Connecticut regarding bullying and safe school climate. Let's see. And we have five-one-four-five dot four. Non-discrimination students formerly Americans with Disabilities Act. So this is actually very similar to the earlier non-discrimination policies. It incorporates the new language, new statutory definition of veteran and the other changes that I mentioned earlier. Five-one-four-five dot five, which is prohibition of sex discrimination and sexual harassment, the student-focused policy. Again, this is related to the four-one-one-eight dot one. It's just that this policy is in the section that focuses on students. So it's the same sorts of changes there.
Thank you very much, Chris. So then now, we're looking for a motion to adopt the following policies. One-two-two-zero, non-discrimination board operations. One-four-one-five, possession of deadly weapons or firearms. Four-one-one-eight, non-discrimination personnel. Four-one-one-eight point one, prohibition of sex discrimination and sexual harassment in the workplace. Five-one-three-one dot nine-one-one bullying and safe school climate plan, changing it also to five-one-three-one point nine. Five-one-four-five point four, non-discrimination students formerly Americans with Disabilities Act. And five-one-four-five point five, prohibition of sex discrimination and sexual harassment students.
I'll move to, we approve those policies.
Thank you, Chris.
Second, Sue.
Thank you, Sue. Do we have any questions or comments about any of these policy changes? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone who is opposed? Or abstaining? I think that was everybody. That will pass. Okay, do we have any future business? All right, now we will be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Don't everybody jump on it at once, gang.
Some moved. Rhea.
Thank you, Rhea.
Second, Sue.
Thank you, Sue.
Rhea and Sue, do we have any questions or comments or observations about the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed or abstaining? The motion passes.